Okay, I'm going to call the Drango City Council Study Session into session. It is two forty-five, two forty-six on August fifteenth. Can we go around and introduce ourselves?
Dave Woodruff here.
Olivia Wassman, City Council.
Mark Morgan.
Jose Magrigo, City Manager.
Erin Heider, Assistant City Manager.
Yildiz Yasi, City Council.
And Jessica Buhl, Mayor Pro Tem. First thing on the theme for today, Study Session, is Financial Excellence in High-Performing Government. First thing on the agenda is Council Review of Agendas. We got those this morning, I think, or yesterday. Anyone have any comments on the future agendas? Okay, great. So next up, Discussion Regarding the Proposed 2024 Department Capital Projects Budget: Public Works Streets, Water, Sewer, Trash, and Recycle General Fund and Technology.
Mayor and Council, starting off with the first agenda item, we have Devin Schmidt, our Acting Chief Financial Officer, who I am sure will be teaming up with other department directors to give the presentation.
Awesome. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I'm Devin Schmidt, Acting Chief Financial Officer for the City of Drango. Today, this presentation will be a presentation on projects for the 2024 capital budget that staff has slated. This will cover the general fund projects as well as public works. For this presentation, we will take questions after each section, and then we do have the responsible directors and their staff available to answer any questions. Included in the packet for your review was all of the project forms on the capital projects. If you have any specific questions, that was included in there, but we are happy to answer anything that you may have. So. There we go. Okay, sorry about that. So again, this is just to review those projects. The budget will be presented to Council at the Budget Retreat in October. So this is the preliminary list of projects for Council Review and for us to be able to provide any questions for Council. So. Okay, so for the general fund in the 2024 budget that staff is planning, we have $5.3 million planned. These projects do range from the portion that is county-funded, from the County Road 250 to 251, as well as some storm drain projects and some IT projects, as well as a Common Threads project, which is an art project that community development is managing. So is there any question on these items? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I was wondering if there's any way to either adjust the budget for Common Threads or maybe designate the public works to install that art project since nobody's bidding on it.
So what?
I know, but no, but it was only still at seventy thousand I saw in the documents. And if nobody's going to bid at that price, since it's been put out to bid, what, six times, we either got to raise the bid amount, or maybe we can do an alternative installation.
I see your question. So if there was a higher budget, what you're thinking, Councilor Yasi, is that potentially we may be, it maybe weren't more attractive. I think part of the challenges that we saw with this project is that it was a federally grant project, a federal grant project that did require some strict limitations on it around American Iron and Steel and Davis Bacon wages. Since this is now a general-funded project, contractors do not have to comply with those strict requirements as they had prior. And so that's certainly a possibility, but it's definitely something staff could pursue in looking at that project.
And I think this is higher than the budget was. I believe we were at fifty. When I was on the Creative Economy Commission, I think it was at fifty thousand, and I think we raised it up. I don't know. Tommy's not here, of course. He knows, he knows all things Common Threads. And then we were talking, if no one bid on it this time, that we would incorporate a replacement for potentially Arc of History into it to maybe make it more worthwhile. I think that's what Tommy's email said.
Okay. Yeah, my concern is just, just so we let the public know that we're thinking about it, and we'd like to get something done on it.
Hello, Council. Tommy Crosby here, Economic Opportunity Coordinator and liaison to the Common Threads Project. We have issued the call for this project, the bid for this project, at $75,000 only once. To Councilor Buhl's point, it was previously at around $50,000. And at the time of the previous bids, just like Devin said, there were, there was a little bit more red tape. One thing that we're hoping to do is we feel like the work being put forward by the CIP team towards the end of 2023 to try to tack this on to a larger project. That seems to be our most feasible, our feasible option, option for the original location. If we do not receive any bites on that approach, we are pursuing a couple of additional locations. We just haven't put forth any dollars or actually spending any of our budget on those alternative locations until we fully exhaust the options with the CIP team. Councilor Yasi, if you are interested, I would be happy to reach out to some local contractors to try to get a better idea of, you know, what price range they would take this project on for. But at this time, I do think that the, the approach, the CIP plan, the CIP team is taking of adding this on to a larger project as an addendum item is our current best option for the original location.
Sounds good. Okay, then just an update on the 250, 251 negotiations with the county. How's that going?
Allison, would you like to join us up here?
I am Allison Baker, Public Works Director. The IGA is currently in draft status and has gone through legal, and we'll look forward to taking it to county to see if they're amenable to the mutual adjustments.
All right. You know, it's just a concern because the budget was raised up from the last time, and it would be nice if we could move forward on that and complete the project sometime this decade.
Very, very much. Looking forward to that and just holding on to signing the construction contract until we have the IGA in place. Thanks.
Any other questions from Council on these projects?
Great, thanks, Tom. So for the 2019 Streets Fund, this is the list of projects that are included for consideration for the 24 budget, and so $10.1 million is planned for the budget. And if Council has any specific questions as it relates to projects, we already have Allison up here. So feel free to ask us any questions.
Do you have any? Okay, so I'm curious on the next steps. You know, the construction of that project is, is going to be dragged out until, what, 2030, and we're doing like two blocks at a time. And it seems like we didn't have a lot of storefronts opting in for the bump outs this year. The, it seems like the excitement is waning on this project. So I'm wondering how we would go about eliminating this project from the budget completely, and then maybe using that money that we don't have on other projects.
So from a conversation on that, the downtown next step, well, this is the storm water, but just as, as a project in general, it is something that we had direction from, obviously, a prior council to continue to go forward. If this project would have more discussion, that would definitely be during our budget, proposed budget presentation that would take place October. And that's where we propose the budget, or I propose my budget to the City Council and receive feedback to have more discussion on these projects. So that would be the, the, the time for that kind of discussion on whether to move forward on that, or what the council sees as that is a priority. At this point, kind of what we're doing is just kind of giving you that background of the projects that you could expect to see in the budget, but not so much here, looking at taking things out or moving things, but that discussion would be had at the Budget Retreat.
And that Budget Retreat is what date?
October 10th.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Would it be beneficial if we have that item on another study session separately beforehand? Because October is a long way out, and then we're pretty much committed to certain things.
I second that motion.
But if they're, but if that's something, how do we go about if you want to move that to a study session? Can we put it on a study session during this meeting, this study session?
Only if there's council support for it, which.
We wouldn't make any decisions.
I think that's exactly where it's a good question or a good clarification, Council Woodruff, is I would need to know kind of the intent of said action. If it is, again, with study session being more informative and educational, that would really could be a presentation where the staff could talk about downtown next steps and what we have done, what we've accomplished, what that timeframe looks like in the future. If it's a discussion in regards to receiving direction from council or some sort of action, whether to continue or not, that would be more of a regular agenda item. So just as we look at that portion and Mark kind of talking, that process that goes through, there's two different avenues that can be used depending on what the intention of that finality decision is.
Yeah, and I apologize. I was trying to get some information on the status of the IGA for the 250, 251 project. So I wasn't quite paying attention to what the question was, but your explanation is exactly correct.
I, I think it would need to start with a study session just to get a current, I mean, there's no, for me, it's like, just get a full update on where we are, what we've done, and where we're going.
That sounds good. And then the funding options, where all the funding from this would come from. And, you know, I'm really curious because I was under the impression that this project came up during COVID and that a lot of people didn't have input because COVID was interfering with the survey. We're able to do any community outreach during that time.
Best Sarah to, to come up, Sarah Hill, our Transportation Director, to give just kind of a brief overview of how downtown next steps started and kind of did that part, and we'll go from there.
We are planning to bring this to Council as a project update. We're happy to do that as a study session or a regular meeting. So not being prepared to give you an update at this time, I would ask if it is okay for us to go ahead and prepare a presentation for Council as an update.
I think that would be excellent. If, if you could also note it as something where the public would be aware that we're getting that up.
Absolutely.
When, when were you planning?
I can work with the City Manager to get that scheduled.
Kyle, make sure, put that, any session calendar.
Thank you.
I, the only question that I had with the, both the general fund CIP and as well as the 2019 Streets Fund, it looks like County Road 250 and 251 is on there twice for a total of 9.4 million.
It is because the funding through the county cannot go through a sales tax fund account. So it will actually come into our general fund account. So that's the 4.4 million portion.
Okay, so the 4.4 is the county's contribution, the five would be ours. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And I apologize for interrupting, but just to go back, I did get an update. Jim Martin did his final edits on the IGA for the 250, 251 project on Friday, and they should have already gone to the council or will go to the council, the county commissioners very shortly.
Any other questions on the CIP plan for 2024?
Yes, also on the 0333, the Third Avenue Street Rehabilitation Construction. What exactly is that? Does that include the mini round at the end of Third Avenue or not?
No, it does not. That is only the pavement resurfacing. It'll be removal of approximately five inches of pavement and identification of any soft spots and repaving. So that we currently were in a situation where the subgr, the subbase has gotten into such bad condition that when we fill a pothole, two weeks later, it pops right back out. And I think everybody's ready for that situation to change. So this is only for pavement, doesn't have anything to do with alignment or any of the multimodal work that will be going on.
Is that, that rehabilitation, does it go from College to what street?
We'll need to coordinate with multimodal, but approximately 13th is where we're estimating.
Okay, from College to 13th, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Council?
Excellent. So next up, we have the Water Construction Fund. So what we're looking at here that staff has slated is $9.5 million for the Water Construction Fund in 2024. And so any questions from Council on the specifics of the projects?
Yes, I see 1158 Downtown Next Steps for, what, 598,000? Okay, so what does that encompass, that little portion?
That is rework of water and sewer based on the revision of the next steps to an anticipated construction of 2025. This will be work that would need to be done in advance to be ready for rework on sidewalks, bullbouts, those kind of areas that will be impacting the, the utilities.
All right. And so would that still be the two blocks? Is that an estimate for two blocks? So we're still looking at an estimate for a lot more to complete that whole project then.
If it continues beyond two blocks, it would be additional funds.
And that would be down Main Street. Are you, are you thinking about doing like one side of the street for all those utilities, or you're thinking about doing one side and then doing the other for all those utilities?
That would be part of the design process, selecting the least disruptive and most easily accessible for future repairs. It would be coordinated with the construction plan for, for downtown next steps so that the least impact on business is managed. the least impact on business is managed.
Okay, and does that include gas, like natural gas, or is that just strictly sewer and water?
Gas is in the alleyways and not part of our street system.
And we don't know what's under there also.
There's a good bit of contingency in there, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I I'm I'm I like your questions, Council. I because straight away it makes me think, so this is, we have four split in three, one point two million divided by three annually, so four hundred thousand for the downtown next step design serving and so on. And then we have the big project for whatever it's gonna cost to potentially redesign and construct the whole bump outs and everything. But we also have these kind of expenses on on top of that. Is that correct? Is there, because I'm just trying to see where is the end of this bill going now? What is the big picture cost going to be? Where are we looking at? What kind of order of magnitude is this downtown next steps? So can I ask for the study session or for the regular meeting update, whichever one it was in the near future, hopefully the to get a very clear picture of what we are anticipating in all the costs?
Yes, I think what you're looking at in regards to some of those things is design is what tells you where the construction costs are. So taking it for like two blocks by two blocks is kind of where the 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 thought process had gone. So we could give you the information that we have then, but for us to give you a clear picture of what the entire project would enable would actually require us to continue to do design work on the following block. So we will give you all the information we have, but I want to be sure that I'm clear that we wouldn't be able to walk in and say, here's what we think this project in totality is going to be. Hence why we're doing this design works to figure out what's there, water, stuff like that, but we'll give you as clear a picture as we have at this time.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that because it's your the update within hopefully includes what you have designed and pretty solid estimates for to what you can guess, best guess, to what is not going to be included, but will be expenses to be coming up later, whenever certain certain portions are designed or or identified. So what is excluded is just as important as what is included. So we have a bitter bit of an idea, okay, it's ten million or twenty million, but but we have to still address A, B, and C and D.
Turn that on. I think it's also helpful for us to know how old the systems are underneath there, what their lifespan is, what the anticipation is of something breaking, how much that would cost if it happens. And so, you know, yes, there's downtown next steps, which is incorporating some sidewalks and stuff, but there's also much more that potentially could happen and be beneficial to our city in the long run. And so I think it's great to include that. So thank you.
Thank you. That's a good point. We'll do so.
Okay, okay, yeah, just one more question. We did get one email in opposition to the solar project. Could you briefly just describe that to me?
You see, it's the Yes, that's the College Mesa Water Treatment Plant Solar Project. And it will install solar panels at the College Mesa Water Treatment Plant, which I'm not sure. Have you you haven't had the opportunity for a tour, but you're familiar, it's off of where Gigline Gulch slash North College. And there are residential properties surrounding the water treatment plant that were built after the water treatment plant. I would note that I'm certain that the the concept of any additional construction raises a red flag. I believe the plant has been very sensitive and very careful about working with ecological care and minimizing height impacts. Obviously, the solar panels will be set up in a way to minimize the visual impact for surrounding areas.
All righty, and and what's the purpose of the solar panels?
To generate power.
For the city?
Yeah, oh, yeah, for the city, yes, and the the water treatment plant.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll follow up on that too. So the we have the lease purchase agreement. That's gonna probably take effect in the near future. Why is it on this capital and projects and not with the revenue set off on that?
This was already the the funding for the installation, the foundations is a little more complex. And this was set into our five year plan prior to looking at the work that would be done internal to the the EPC plan that Marty's been working on.
So the what we've seen in the energy performance contract for solar panels at this location has at least four hundred and fifty thousand additional costs that for
They're two separate projects. This isn't the EPC contract. This is a separate project.
This the solar, this solar project, these solar panels are part of the EPC.
I don't believe so. I believe these were direct funding that Marty referenced in the the breakout, but in can you correct me, is that the this was a direct? These are direct direct funding out of the water fund.
All right, just so I am very clear, so the EPC does not include solar panels at College Mesa. Okay.
No.
Any other questions from council on the water?
Okay. Great. We'll move on to sewer. And so what staff has slated for the twenty four budget includes one point two million dollars and sewer projects. And so any questions from council on the sewer projects?
I'll ask a quick question. So the North College Sewer, is that the same project that I probably asked about two years ago, the inliner where I wanted to see the analysis, or is that a different one?
And could you repeat the question? I couldn't quite hear you.
Is that North College Sewer line rehab, which is currently zero? Was that the project that I had asked two years ago about and multiple times after, actually? And and a better review of the options that were evaluated in liner versus open, which was supposed to be combined with the water line? Is that that project or is that?
This is the section of North College Road that we're doing a reconstruction of the roadway and utilities. And good foresight has made plans for sewer as well as water at getting ahead of the new construction so that we don't go in two years later and tear it up, installing new sewer lines that are needed then.
But is it the same, maybe Jose, you can explain, do you remember you had it on your board? I probably asked you five times about that.
Not sure if it was five times. I think there's a couple of times and there was a your question was in regards to the the what I call construction, lack of better word, design that we were using, whether we were doing inline or whether we were replacing the entire sewer line. I'm not sure if this is that exact project. I would have to deal with Allison to confirm or not on that side.
And I I too can't tell you for sure that it was this project we were talking about. I do remember we did send you a memo that described pros and cons of the the various approaches to relining, using various materials versus an inline in French replace replacement. I can refresh and resend that to you. It's been close a year and a half, close to two years since I sent it, so I'm happy to.
Yeah, I so I my question was still open after that memo, so and it was on your board for a while. It is the road that goes from Jbos up to
That is that is correct. That goes up and ties into Gigline. It's part of the College Mesa.
Okay, so that is exactly this project. So why is it zero? Because we have, is the water, is there a water line replacement? Because there was a camera inspection, I think, and apparently was damages and it needed to be rehapped. That was the information I remember. And then it didn't happen last year and now it said zero, so it's not gonna so is it? Was it really not that urgent or did something happen that made it all of a sudden better?
I Currently, we are anticipating that project not starting construction until next year. Justin, can you speak to the timing on that? Thank you.
So we recently completed the design for North College and that includes water, sewer, storm and streets. And we've put that out to bid. We are expecting proposals back on the first of September. Once we receive those, we'll know what the contractor's schedule will be. Currently, for twenty twenty four, we have no money there. But for water and sewer, the utilities, we're hoping to complete those this year. And then the street after a winter shutdown. But if that doesn't happen, then we'll be moving money into this account, rolling it from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four.
It's it's just interesting because I I remember this was a project that covers water sewer. It covers the the roads because and then Parks and Rec Advisory Board was involved and the multimodal board was involved because of the design of the road, because it was gonna be reopened. So I would have assumed everything goes at once. And that split up in one one section to the second.
It it really can't go all at once because we have to replace the utilities under the water sewer storm and then come back and replace the street. So we're hoping to do that this year, have a winter shutdown, and then the contractor comes back and then does all of the surface improvements later. Similar to downtown next steps, we're hoping to fund the utility replacements in twenty twenty four and then the surface replacements in twenty five.
Okay.
And oh, God, sorry, no, no.
I and was the sewer line rehab, is it a rehab or replacement? Because that was the bottom line question when I asked for the evaluation of options, because you had open construction. So what what can you share your evaluation? We can not during this meeting, but can you send me something that for me confident as that at this example, I took this project as an example, you probably remember to see, to get a good feeling like, okay, you guys check every box in in reviewing and comparing and then making the best recommendation to council and for community. So is it possible to share that where you I'm not even sure if you do inliner or a replacement?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I I will acknowledge that Justin was not when the original question came up. Justin was not handling utilities and he has come up to speed very quickly and has a good grip of the the project as a whole, but the original response came from our utilities engineer. And we can follow up, get the information from him to provide you a addition or follow up report on on what the process was to get here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And since the original requests, we have now a CIP division that oversees a lot of this and has changed processes in terms of analyzing and stuff, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And then for timing wise, there's also a calming, a traffic calming coming down College Hill, correct, that is part of this project?
Yes.
And there was some pushback from neighbors and the design. And so I think that that caused this project to move out a little bit as well. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's really why the actual road alignment and asphalt work will be done next year rather than this year and really focus twenty twenty three on utilities, getting those out of the way.
Well, and it makes sense to try to get all of that in line so it all can be done together and cost savings where we can. But it's good for us to remember because we have so much going on in our emails, like refresher from two years ago as to like the challenges that we had and why things kind of get pushed back because the neighbors want to be involved, which is great. And I think so. Thank you for the refresher. Any other questions on sewer?
All right. So that is the end of our projects listing for council. I did want to make a note, you know, obviously we are in August. We bring the budget to council in October. This is the plan currently, but of course, as items could change, just wanted to put that caveat out there. We will keep council obviously informed of any changes that could occur in the budget between from what you've seen today and October, but also wanted to provide when we do bring this back to council. We will include how long the projects are expected to occur if we think about, for example, the twenty six million dollar airport project Tony mentioned that'll be completed in the near term, so twenty twenty six. So we're gonna be showing kind of a Gantt chart or design that shows here's what is slated and when. Because council may see some of these projects continuing to reappropriate as they're they weren't intended to be a one year project. So just wanted to add that level of clarity as well prior to us diving into the budget retreat. Any other questions for me? Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda, wait. Okay, is it the Parks and Recreation Facility? Is that right?
Okay, Mayor or Mayor Pro Tem and we have Scott McLean coming to give a presentation on that and we are moving really quickly.
Yes.
Through CIP project. So, okay, we're gonna have to continue to redo our estimates.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Presenting the Parks and Rec Facility Inventory Future Needs Assessment. Also have Rob Schobert with us today, who was the one that put the report together and then is serving as the interim Assistant Parks Director. I am Scott McLean, serving as the interim Parks and Recreation Director. And then Kelly Jake Cox, the Assistant Recreation Director is with us today as well. So this report kind of looked at our facilities earlier this year, the beginning of the year. We presented a report that was completed for park facilities that was completed last fall, Rob completed that as well, but kind of looked at all of our park systems and maintenance that needs to occur that's beyond kind of our typical summer maintenance. Bigger projects and then tried to rate those so that we have some prioritization for those projects. This does the same with our Parks and Recreation Facilities, the facilities we looked at. We have Chapman Hill Ice Rink, the Chapman Ski Area, Durango Gymnastics, the Community Rec Center, Lake Night Horse and more Park Shop. So with those, we've got quite a more Park Shop, three years old, fairly new. Rec Center is just over twenty years old, as well as Chapman, so starting to see some issues there, the ski area. We've got lifts from Tenth Mountain Division that are fifty seven years old and and issues there as well, so. So what Rob did was went through each of the facilities, spent a lot of time looking at every all the amenities within the facilities and then applied a ranking of one through five to each of those items. So a one would be very poor. Those are items that we need to replace immediately. One, one year replacement schedule, two was poor, so things that are not doing well, that we need to look at a two to three year replacement schedule. Fair, it's kind of that five to ten year, we need to be looking at replacement. Good would be ten to fifteen and then very good was ten to twenty, which just helps us then put some numbers to those items and then have a priority list of what's very poor, what do we need to address soon? And kind of look at years after that of where we're at. So in addition to looking at the condition of the each of the amenities of those, also looked at the anticipated life expectancy. And so the buildings may have one life expectancy, but is much longer, you know, forty to a hundred years. The components inside that building may be much less. So that was considered as we were doing this analysis. And then also looking at items that either were items that could fail, that would shut down our services versus things that will probably tend to fail gradually over time or something that we can repair quickly and and keep doing what we do. So some examples of things that could fail right away would might be the ice making mechanical equipment at Chapman, the ski lifts at Chapman. The swimming pool has some mechanical equipment as well. So some of the big picture items that we looked at that we need to look at sooner than later. First recommendations we had were three of safety. One was the Durango Gymnastics Facility, which is down in Bodo. The the roof on that building is leaking. We've got a lot of issues with the snow on it the last couple of years. It does not drain off the roof, which creates more of a problem there. So looking at what can we do for the roof, we do have that in budget, the proposed budget for twenty twenty four. Another issue that was identified was at the Durango Rec Center. Uh, another issue that was identified was at the Durango Rec Center. Not so much anything specific to our rec center, but there's been a couple of other facilities, I believe, both within the state, that in the last couple of years have had the hangers for the HVAC fail because of the humidity in the pool area. Um, so scheduling, making sure that we're on top of having that those inspected by a third party. Um, and then the third was more park shop, the park offices and our office working area. The the new shop is is a couple of years old at this point, but we also have a number of buildings out um in the back that are extremely old. I think a couple of them were used before we got them. Um, there's been issues with those facilities and weather getting into them. It really just gives us a place to park some equipment, get it out of the weather and have it secure, but have some leaking and some safety issues. I think some of that we could probably address with some better lighting, some safety mats um and the walkways before winter, so. I would say on these three items, like I said, the gymnastics, we have proposed for the twenty twenty-four budget and then are also working on the HVAC inspections here soon. Couple of issues that we saw, different facilities, more with supply chain and then also future plan planning. Um, supply chain, we're seeing seen a couple of times this summer on things that we used to be able to have overnighted to us to for replacement parts um that we now end up with something that's failing and they're they're weeks out or even months. So trying to kind of be proactive with that and look at how what what may be likely to fail or those things that we can have on the shelf in our facilities um or have a backup plan. So if those things do go down, we're we're more efficient in getting them repaired. So again, the ice rink is one of those key items and just all the equipment for the ice making. Um, suggestion to uh look at those a little bit more in depth. Have a team come look at that equipment with us, some of the suppliers, be able to provide a better idea of what we need to really be paying attention to at this point. And then also the Ski Hill, which is in the proposed budget for uh twenty-three, twenty-four and replacing little toe, big toe, and the lighting there, which are all on on the verge of failing. Uh, the rec center, kind of the same thing, that we've got a lot of big pumps for the swimming pool, uh mechanical equipment for the pool and the building and being proactive and looking at what we need to be planning for for the rec center. And then Lake Night Horse on the beach, we've had an issue with just all the wind we have up there and erosion. Uh, we did have money um for twenty twenty-three, still do for a have a an engineer give us some suggestions on how to address that. And talking with the Bureau of Reclamation, who we partner with, with the management of the lake up there, they've suggested that they have some people in Denver that could probably help us with that. So we've been trying to coordinate that before we press forward with hiring an engineer. So as far as fiscal planning for those six facilities, looking at Chapman Hill um to maintain the condition that we're at, like I said, looking at how do we need to be planning for uh the equipment there in the future? Uh, Chapman Ski Hill, looking to major upgrades on the tow rope and tow ropes and the lighting. And then continue to fund maintenance to the operating budget. Um, Durango Gymnastics, the we moved into that facility because our facility at Mason Center was in poor condition, um, needed to get out of there. And then in our master plan in twenty twenty, we identified uh future opportunity or looking for future opportunities to move gymnastics, maybe in conjunction with another rec center or other rec facility, uh, but looking at really what's what makes sense for being in that building and for how long. The Durango Rec Center, uh, we've talked about having discussions to identify having maybe a reserve policy for future capital needs so that we have a a situation there that we've got means to um take care of it. Late Night Horse would be to continue the upgrades we have planned. We currently have the uh decon station, entry station out the bed for construction. Uh, we have a a flat grant, which is Federal Land Access Program uh to replace the road from the entry to the boat ramp. Um, that is about a five million dollar project, four million is grant funds, just over a million is city responsibility and looking to um that's a design now, uh, go out to bid in twenty-five and construction on that in twenty-six. And then more park shop, uh, continue to maintain to the operating budget and prioritize replacement of the of the sets we had out there. So that's what I have. Is there any questions or additional information that we can provide?
Yes, Councilor Yasi.
Well, um, thank you for that update. Now, um, I had heard that there was a uh an issue with the flooring at Chapman Hill concerning the bubbling up of the um the floor. So that's not in this budget or is it somewhere?
This isn't necessarily budget, but this is just an outline of issues we're having and that is um.
Is that coming up somewhere because that's of critical importance?
Yes, so we are are working on trying to get that repaired. And actually, that's in our uh council meeting this evening, our discussion.
The Durango Gymnastics, that's not the Mason Center project. That's that's not the Mason Center building, sorry. That's the one out in Bodo, correct? Okay. Um, and then the, is there any, do we have any plans for the Mason Center? Yeah, or where is that at?
Don't believe we do have any plans for the Mason Center at this point.
Because that roof is failing as well, yes? That's why I was confused because I was like, I was like, wait, which roof is failing? Okay.
It is failing. I know we've done some things uh where we demolished portion of it, correct?
So we, yes, we demolished everything. That was a the old school. We demolished everything but the gymnasium are currently using that as storage. Um, that had a sloped roof on it, so it's got it. It's performing a little bit better than rest of the roof of that building. Um, but a lot of our rec facility um recreation program, equipment across those types of things are all stored in there at this point. So I think that's part of the the chain of if we move out of there, where can we then have a place to store that equipment?
Okay, perfect. And then um I'm gonna ask a few questions about Chapman Ice Arena just because I get a lot of people asking me about that because of my boys mostly. The sheet of ice there, um, I was told years ago, this is like back when I worked there, um, that it could never be a year-round sheet of ice. Is that correct?
That that is my understanding correct.
Okay, and it is not a regulation size rink. It is not the same size as a normal hockey rink, correct? Okay. Okay, um, is there any plans for a year-round sheet of ice or one that even is regulation size for our skaters?
We don't currently have plans for another sheet of ice, no.
Thank you.
A third interest.
Yes, thank you. Those are all my questions. Anyone else? Okay. We just blew through that meeting.
Doing very well. Uh, yeah, so we we uh flew through the meeting and uh this will definitely help us as long as we stay on this pace with some of the other study sessions to uh be a little more uh yes, concise with our estimates. I guess an hour and a half usually would be for a CIP, uh, but now maybe that's a little bit less less. So uh apologies again on the the time estimate. Obviously, it's just an estimate. We never know where the questions will come from, but uh we'll try to get it to a little bit more of a part where we're uh getting used to the new routine and timing of the council.
Excellent, thank you. All right, well, then I will adjourn this meeting at three thirty.